I did. We had decided, actually we should ask both. We, among us, had decided that we were far enough apart that we could take off our masks. There is. I'm trying to see if you're okay with that.
I'll make sure.
I might actually. Right. In part, we go things. Okay, you want to start then?
I did.
Okay, it's six oh four, we'll call the meeting to order. Want to mention that we have decided to take off our masks. We've distanced ourselves, we arranged our rooms and we clearly, nearly six feet apart. And discussed amongst ourselves and we were all comfortable with it, so that was what we decided to do. First thing we have on our agenda is public comments. I'm going to read our public comment disclaimer. I forgot my customized one, but this is still on the space. The board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers be limited their comments to five minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them. But to protect the impartiality of the board, you will not commit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about personnel or students nor against any person connected with the motel school, such as you should be brought to the school administration. The board will not respond to comments made during public comment except to clarify issues, but when appropriate, just the district administration will follow up at a later point. That said, I don't think we have any members of the public joining us. So, having your public comment, we will move on to approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of October sixth. Did everyone get the minutes in their packet? Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm hoping for the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second. All those in favor? I. Okay, motion carries. Correspondents? I don't have any correspondence that I wanted to share. Here goes the other correspondent too.
I shouldn't have.
Okay, superintendent's report.
So I pass out this colorful document, I just thought I would share with you that I get these twice a week. It's all public data, but everything is put together for it in a way that's really relevant to the superintendent. They asked that we not share it broadly, but I have all the companies in the world that are able to stay here in this meeting. On page two, it breaks down the schools in our region, under region seven, and then by county. So we can see at a glance how our neighbors are doing, how they're doing. North Fork is currently, and this is over our set, our fourteen day rolling average. We have had no cases and we have zero secondary indicators. A few of our neighbors are in the moderate range, but it is really small, one to two cases per county. They're not large numbers, but because they're so small, the, you know, the percentage is showing us. But none of these schools are considering not continuing in full person at this time. So we're in good shape. Richfield County is looking a little bit, or a lot red, but again, we're more concerned with our immediate area and we are still looking very, very safe relative to our region, relative to the county and relative to the state. But North Kingdom looks awfully close. Pardon? North Kingdom looks. North Kingdom has an elderly facility and that's where they all are. It's not really reflective of the town. It's really an isolated area within.
It is and it isn't, because that's where North Fork people visit. Do you know what I mean? Quite as it contains, not a lot of people as well as, you know.
There are a few other cases. There are hotspots aside from.
Yes.
Um, I'm just saying that's.
Can you just, I don't need to be people or. Thanks. Very welcome. What's leading indicator versus secondary?
So the secondary are, that would be, are you trending upwards? They look at trend and.
I see, number of positive cases by letting go to all tests.
Right.
I see. Okay.
And then again, every week I am on an hour long conference called with the state Public Health Department. I'm on another hour conference with the point in Public Health Department and area superintendent. And then we leave the region seven superintendents meet to digest things, make sure we're all interpreting things the same way and have some common, you know, communication among all of them. We share our correspondence, we share immediately. So I knew when there were a couple of cases over the weekend, just recall, they had a couple of cases not related to the school, shouldn't impact anything. So there's a great deal of communication all with the and resulting, and we want to keep a telepathy as we can and make sure that we're current on all the protocols and follow all the safety guidelines. For that, that. At some point, I'm not sure if it was that of board meeting or if it was one of our parent conferences or meetings that Lauren and I have, it came up as a concern about the heaviness of the backpacks. And that perhaps we shouldn't be having the devices go home every night because they were too heavy. So we did our own little investigation. I went online and kind of looked at what the guidance was around how much weight children should have in the backpack. And it says that a loaded backpack should not weigh more than about twenty percent of body weight. So if you weigh a hundred fifty pounds, your backpack should not be thirty pounds. But when we get down to children, a fifty pound child should carry a maximum of seven and a half pounds. A hundred pound child should carry a maximum of fifteen pounds. So we invested in, I don't know, a fifteen, you know, dollar luggage scale. And a backpack with a device was one point four pounds, I believe.
I, I spot tested a variety of kids one morning that looked like they had heavy backpacks, and particularly a couple of the children whose parents raised a concern. And there were no children who had backpacks that exceeded their record.
So that's good to know. So we figured if the backpacks were too heavy, it's not because of our device, what else are in those backpacks? So if children are carrying heavy bottles of water, that would add to it. So we suggested bring the empty bottles, fill them up when you get here.
Did you tell them the students that? Because Lauren and I came home and said, I should bring my empty bottle to go to school.
Well, you know, it's not heavy. I mean, so anything that we can do to help it. We have a little bit more grant money coming in. We are going to get at least one more additional bottle of Vila Rupert so that.
And to have them on all the food.
Yeah. We've, we've done, we've done well with the grant money that we've got to care about the state and that's one of the things that would be really beneficial. What else? I, I sent, you all got copies of the letter that went home explaining that we're going to reclaim the thirty minutes at the end of the day. That's just a win-win situation. The bug company knows that we're good to go for after Thanksgiving break. And other important change, our reopening committee had talked about the fact that we would have a first public device that went home so the kids would have them home in the event that we had in the school closure. And we were thinking at the time it would be great, because if we had a snow day, we could have a remote day. That really is not a viable option. Several concerns were raised, not beliefs of which, you know, if it's a bad storm and electricity goes out the number of homes, it wouldn't be the connectivity. Teachers and parents are going to have to be shoveling themselves out. Who's going to be able to supervise the kids? So, and then other people said, you know, a snow day, great tradition, you know, people like snow days. And I said, well, you know, they don't like so much, you know, on two fifty or ninety degrees. But that's okay, I can tolerate that. So we decided that, you know, as a region, we would not move to a remote day for a single one off snow day. If it looked like it's going to be a week long storm enclosure because of weather, we would use that first day as a snow day and make an assessment. And it would give us a few hours to all of families to see if we were in a good place to move to remote learning the next day. And in the letter, I did say, if it looks like we're going to have a bazillion of snow days, when we get to like four or five, we'll sit and look to see, do we want to make some other arrangements so that we're not going to be way into June? Because here we did start a few days later because of the mandated professional development day at the beginning of the year. So we don't want to be going through June on the fifth on the sixth. So we'll keep an eye on that.
I think that's great. I love that we can be so flexible and responsive. I mean, that's, that's great.
Well, I'm glad that seen us like we're responsive and not wishy-washy. I hate to put open up, say we're going to do this and then go, oh, no, we're not going to do that. But at the same time, it makes no sense to follow through on doing something if it's not the right thing to do.
So, yeah, I know, we've had some experience, because with the high school and middle school being half permanent, you get to see what the power interruptions do for people, because there have been some power interruptions and it has caused some, you know, disconnects, so.
And this really helps us for in-person learning. So, you know, even though the makeup days would do aren't the quality that we would have for the regular days, I think here, there's still value to having in-person days as opposed to, you know, more remote days. So, like you said, we'll be flexible, we'll play that by year.
I don't think she, it is. I don't know if she'll wait until after, but like as far as the calendar and spring week, there's been many discussions with region seven about what to do with that week off, because I know at my college, we changed the voting days so that kids aren't going on campus and going to hotspots and coming back. So as they were talking among the superintendents about the scattering spring break days or changing the springs.
What we did talk about was that, you know, most of us have in our calendar that we can't usurp April vacation days and make a day if needed. But that is a really unpopular thing with staff as well as families, they like to have that time. The other thing we talked about this morning is that as there are many schools in districts throughout Richfield County that are going to send out a, a letter from all of them signing it, saying that they're going to have a, you know, at least a two week closing after Thanksgiving and after the Christmas holiday to mitigate anyone's traveling. And we just saw, well, that is a really stupid, bad idea for us. So we talked about crafting a letter that we will all send out that reminds parents about the holidays and the risk of traveling and to be extra cautious about, you know, where are you traveling and if you come back to, you know, think about what you need to quarantine. And if there's any, you know, chance that you expose it, we want to make sure that we don't want, that we don't, you know, contaminate an environment that's been so, so nice and safe. So we will send that letter out, but we didn't have any, any discussion about rotating or floating days in April. Just that, you know, parents and people kind of count on that, even if they're not traveling. It's a week that traditionally has been something people hold for sacred. So I don't know if the board has any, once having a discussion about whether that's something we should talk about at hotel.
What about the idea of allowing people to opt into, you know, at-home learning for the two weeks after the break, something like that?
Well, they would all have to really opt into it, really, you know. And if, if someone's traveling and they, you know, are in a hotspot and they're coming back and they want to do remote learning for two weeks, yes, we could definitely do that.
And they, they have to, I think, following the checklist. They are required if they travel to a state that is considered a high risk or is on the Connecticut Travel Advisory. And the only reason I'm remembering that was because I just had a parent ask me about those protocols, because she was, you know, making family plans, traveling to a state that's currently on that list. So in that case, the family would have to quarantine at home even if they have a negative test. So they.
We would often have the option of doing.
Oh, yes, and they would remote learn, absolutely, yes. So they already made plans to remote learn. So while they were, I think, gathering that information to determine if they want to go. Go. They were, you know, kind of trying to identify is that, you know, what are the restrictions?
Well, I think we should tell people that, that if they go to one of those hot, like well before.
Well, we can include that in our, you know, that, you know, we're strongly advising people to, you know, think carefully about traveling to hotspots. If it's someplace you're going to go, please be sure that you understand the quarantine rules. And if you're required to quarantine for two weeks upon return, contact us, make arrangements for remote learning during that time.
Maybe you'll see, you should probably give them a deadline when they have to tell you about, so you can be out there.
That's pretty standard now, I mean, anybody traveling.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not sure people think that far in advance, they'll say like, I've got to tell the school.
And she's not allowed, you know, to go anywhere.
Well, the thing is, you can travel to someplace that's not a hotspot, two days after you arrive, it's now a hotspot. So your changes so quickly that people really have to be paying attention. And to the degree we know that people are traveling and follow up on it, but we will make sure that that, that, that information.
You know, you look at even just the Connecticut was like, Danbury is at eight percent. I mean, there are super, there must be a lot of families who's very, that they're down to Danbury. And you want to go, okay, we're, you know, signing our state, and it's in state, so.
Well, I mean, you know, the governor's latest edict was no more than ten people at an inside or outside event. So I don't know that, I mean, it appears to that. A lot of people, you know, you're not going to do Thanksgiving the way you did at the big family gathering together for the holidays, because how many families have ten or fewer people?
But some are making it. I mean, I can speak to myself, I'm having six.
You're having six.
Right.
You're.
But they're probably people in your bubble, right? They're not people coming from.
No.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Just to quarantine two weeks before they enter my room.
Yeah.
Just because they have to have a bigger family gathering.
Right. So they'll be small. So I'm, I'm just hoping that people are not hiding too, otherwise you're going to have to know it.
I just think it should be clear that they have the, that they know that if they do go away, that they need to tell the school. And then they, and that the school has enough time to prepare for it. Because I can imagine that they're, but you could go alone.
Right. If you get an email on January second, oh, my two kids are going to quarantine me and the teachers have no days to prepare.
Well, we would tell parents, students, that, you know, we would really like at least a few days' notice to prepare. So, you know, for the parents who tell us before they leave for the, the break, this is what we're doing and we're prepared by January second. If we get that call on January second, we make that up and we'll get you out as quickly as we can, but it's not going to be usual.
They take absences for holidays.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Yeah. Then the only other thing that I have is and ask Kathy to put the committee reading dates right on the agenda next to the committee, on the committee page. He types this up, this is our collective best reflection of all the changes, but if you can take a look at it and tell us if there's anything different, then we will correct this and get it right on the agenda for next month.
And the idea is, of course, they might not always meet at these times, but that's kind of like the jumping off point where they're going to meet. And I asked you to do that just so that when we were going through our agenda each month, I would just know who to ask if they had new things to talk about. I just thought it'd be more efficient that way.
Yeah.
Also, I can never, I honestly can't remember, I just can't remember. So by having a place where they're listed and I see them on there, I can maybe just show up every day.
Oh, dear. Looks good to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're good, Kath. And then unless you have any questions for me, I don't have any more great news or information than you.
Does anybody have any questions about the chats?
Yeah.
To offer on?
I don't have.
What else? Okay, moving on to the principals review.
Okay. We had quite a few exciting events happen in the past month. We had the volunteer fire department come with the fire truck. And the students met outside of the driveway and learned about fire prevention month. We weren't able to have this spectacular, but the PTO did not let us down. And we had a wonderful Halloween hunt throughout the building where there were riddles created by Anne and I think Jenny. And they, the kids had to solve the riddle and when they got to the location, there was a spooky scene and a little Halloween non-duet treat for them. And then the fifth and sixth grade organized a mock election the day before Election Day and really matched the process of voting in person very well, including the stickers at the end. And thanks to the PTO for the future voter masks that our students received. And although Veterans Day tomorrow won't be an in-person event, the video will be set to go on the website tomorrow, thanks to John and all the teachers and students who worked very hard to prepare a wonderful celebration and performance to honor our veterans. I already got an email from one of the veterans who was invited to watch the video on the website. And he shared his immense gratitude for the fact that we were still doing something to recognize the veterans. So that was really heartwarming and I'm really excited to see the video tomorrow. So make sure that you, you know, visit our website and take a look at it. Let's see, oh, I didn't know how many socks were collected at the time of this printing, but the fifth grade traditionally does sock over during the month of October. And they collected over a thousand socks for a homeless shelter that they're going to identify. And our PDEC committee participated in our first learning walk where we went around and observed students and their ability to, you know, state what they were learning, how they knew they'd be successful, peer and self-feedback, and identifying their next steps. And we collected a lot of evidence that shows that our students are making excellent progress in those areas that lead to increased achievement. That about sums it up. We have parent teacher conferences that are going to be virtual the two days before Thanksgiving break. And that's our most current enrollment, although we do have a student in early primary who's moving and a fifth and sixth grade student who are moving by the end of this week. So we will, as of Friday, be at a total enrollment of seventy-seven.
I just said two. They're moving out of the area?
Yes, one is moving to Australia and. And the other family is moving to North Kingdom.
Just out of curiosity, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What was the, what were the elections this summer?
Oh, our students elected Joe Biden. By? Oh, jeez, I think it was forty-something to twenty-something.
That's two options in the vote that they call.
Just curious. Yeah, no, that's a good question. We talked a lot of good things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, and we talked a lot about respecting all the candidates and how you disagree, you know, respectfully and really try to make sure that we hit home that civic responsibility as well as the characteristics that we want our students to demonstrate.
Biden Harris won at regional seven's mock election as well, but by twenty votes.
Oh, I'm sorry, what we did, we only might put it was Biden saying. Or what's.
But Biden Harris won the mock election at regional seven.
By twenty.
By twenty votes.
That's pretty close.
Yeah.
That also did make some of the other election, doesn't it?
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
For our standing committees. Personnel and negotiations.
Well, that's ongoing, again, what else should be said? Donna's not here. You and I are here, but we're meeting tomorrow again.
So we, I don't remember the last, the last meeting, have we already done the, the contract for the custodians? The custodian contract is signed and done. And we're in the middle of the teacher negotiation. And we meet again tomorrow. The curriculum and technology meeting hasn't happened yet, we were supposed to meet today by this calendar, sorry.
Actually, I have it on my calendar for next Tuesday. We didn't meet today because you all have.
Busy.
Yes, so we rescheduled, so next Tuesday.
Make sure I.
I'll send out another, I'll, I'll send everybody an email confirmation through Google account.
Nine o'clock, nine Tuesday?
And this is four thirty, so it's four thirty or five.
Well, we were meeting at five o'clock for Gordon and I'm not sure.
I want to check in with you.
Okay, great. If you let me know, then I'll send that out.
Is four thirty difficult for you, Ginger? Okay, I'll check in with Gordon. I don't believe the finance committee has met. Policy, that's something for us to talk about, right?
Yes. Second reading. I'm just trying to remember which policies they were, I haven't looked here, but I'm like.
Residents, students conduct, special ed. And social and motion, right?
I didn't bring mine down, Jill.
Well, that's what I had from our, from our, oh.
Yeah, the minutes.
Oh, yeah, I know, right. Yeah.
So this is our second reading.
Second meeting.
And so we, we vote on it next.
No, we, we can vote, we can decide if you like, if there's need for more discussion, then you can vote on the vote.
Okay. So there were three new policies, promoting careers, discipline, physical exercise, and discipline of students, ages of attendance.
Yes, that's right, I read them.
Those are three new policies.
Right.
And then we had homeless students gifted and talented programs and suspension, expulsion, due process. Right. Does anybody have any questions regarding these or concerns about the changes? From the policy committee, do you guys have any concerns or things that you want to point out as pros, cons, otherwise?
Mostly we followed the, pretty much, pretty, yeah.
And revised one just to expand into a language that has to be changed. Sorry, there's really not a lot to.
Okay, so we have. I mean.
We're trying to find a creative way to rewrite that language, but yeah, there's, there's really not a lot of contentious or controversial stuff in there that's on.
Okay, well, so then how about a motion to accept these policies as presented? From the chair of policy.
I'm just going to, I will motion.
Okay, the motion's made by Jill.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, great, so that motion carries and thank you for all that work, policy committee, that was a lot of policies to get, get done.
How are we going with all one? It's on the list. It's on the agenda, I believe, for the next policy meeting, but was there something that we were going to get that someone did? Were you going to?
I was going to work. It was, you were going to, Rachel Alencillo had a piece of paper that was like the northwest.
Yeah.
Regional.
Okay.
The guidelines, the guidelines that they had come up together, that all the people were trying to.
So you need that by next.
Or in the policy meeting, maybe? Could be in the summer. Yeah, I love this list. It's getting ready to come to me.
So did you get motion for all six policies that would be existing in the new?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, how about, is that all for the policy committee? All for the council committee? Okay, how about the, is that all for the policy committee? All for the policy committee will meet next week. Great. Our health and wellness?
We have our own. All right. Everyone has a, actually one right now. Do you copy? You're writing it now? Everyone has a copy of the updated policy from twenty twenty-one that. Health and wellness committee has approved. We've been working very hard on revising this and updating it and, you know, even through COVID breaks and everything else, so. Finalized everything to prove that our last meeting last week. So we are asking the board to review it and. You know, the feedback, I guess, and I would make a motion to approve this policy. So we can post this to the website. I believe this has to be posted. So is this policy, this is, this is, this would go through our policy committee? This would be?
This was a mandatory, a state mandated. Policy that we did go through policy committee and it's, it's, we have a number in our policy, however. We're mandated to revise or to review and, and we vote on it every, we vote on anything changes at least every three years. So we're due for this, we went through it, anything that was no longer relevant and changed, anything that we thought we needed to. Add and added, so there have been some revisions made. It's been a long journey. I can't begin to identify with the things where that we. That we changed, but.
It's also, I updated all the electronic.
Improvements?
Yeah.
But again, there's not a lot of really big content changes from the last time the board voted on it. We just updated it to reflect current practice and current. Guidelines.
Okay. So there's nothing particular that you feel that you need to point out as hugely different from the past?
I don't think so. I think we went through it and made sure that what the policy said we were actually enacting and. You know, I updated the student handbook and, you know, we, we just made sure that the to-do's were to-done.
And also just in some areas, maybe for the, we did include like following CDC state guidelines, especially on COVID and food. Snacks and beverages and things and not to say it has to be originally left, but just that it follows current guidelines.
Sure.
They have changed it.
It's changed it. Yeah, well, it's good sense. Okay, well, I think Ginger made a motion to. Okay. So I make a motion to approve the, should I say, policy number six one four two dot one zero one. The student nutrition responsibility, school wellness policy for the next three years. Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, well, she gets. Thank you.
No, and just so, and while reviewing the policy, I noticed that you don't have to meet every month, you don't have to meet four times a year, so.
No one bought the idea of only meeting every other month.
So we're meeting in March and January. So we're meeting five times a year, so we can, we'll look at their.
Good, okay, great. Um, our communications committee will meet next week, right? Um, we'll have, it's chapter PTO. PTO meeting is tomorrow and you're in coverage of Halloween. I know something that is going to come up with PTO is. How, what's the feeling about the holiday? And book fairs, the holiday fairs and book fairs, is there a way we can make those COVID safe? And so PTO is really very willing to do whatever we need to do in order to, you know, bring the essence of those events. So if that means maybe one person staffs the, like one, like. PTO member, one community member staffs the events and that person could be, you know, like take their temperature, they can, you know, do those certain health questions that they do outside of doctors' offices. Of course, they would wear masks, they would, you know, do the things that they needed to do. Maybe even like setup can be done by a very small crew and after hours and limited to, you know, they'll make sure that they're in the same one space, the school, that sort of thing, but. We really feel like those are important activities, especially the holiday fair has a very big impact, I think, on the community and the. Culture, the school, you know, so we really have a heart to make that happen somehow.
I think we can pull off a holiday event.
Um, and for the book fairs, it's not exactly clear. I think that's something we'll maybe talk about tomorrow at the PTO meeting, but. You know, those come, they have those like pre-fam, they're all together, so they start going and open, so. Again, that would have to be staffed by someone, but it doesn't have to be huge staff. It could just be like. And that's, that's what I think the PTO will be talking about. There is no decision made yet on being finally safe free, but.
The question of the book fair, I know they're really have backed up on the idea that the virus is. Transmitted by surfaces, but there's still talking about cohorts and books and materials. If we have a book fair, we are going to have. Multiple cohorts coming in and handling these. I don't know if that is going to be a problem. I would be happy to call the health department and get your guidance on that, but. That might be something that would.
Well, if we have to give up something, book fairs, they're way less important than the holiday fair. Holiday fair, we really love, that's really going.
And we even asked the kid, like, don't touch anything that you really want it.
Yeah.
They're like, or they haven't, you know how like they get sort of so involved in, like you.
Oh, yeah, they should book that in.
Give gloves, but give them all pair of gloves. A pair of gloves that we needed.
All right, yeah, I'm hoping that's something because just. And we're kind of using that logic at recess too, if they, you know, wash their hands or sanitize their hands prior to recess and then they're playing with a ball. Not everybody's going to have their own ball, but, you know, you're. Because of, you know, exactly what you just said, they're, you know. Kind of relaxed about those ideas about passing the clean surfaces, more about are your hands clean, you know, prior and after. So I think we could figure out a way to make sure that that's.
I think they know, they see they come in and go hand sanitizer, you know.
You know. Actually, they're doing about that because especially with the little ones, their fingers are all over the place and then they're touching and then the next group comes in, so. Even if they're washing their hands before, they come in there, they leave this stuff going on, but I, I think if they, I'd be happy to have them have gloves on, but. If we have somebody monitoring and making sure that they're watching the kids and sanitizing, I look at it like.
I mean, investment is there, you know, a couple boxes of gloves, it's no, no big deal.
And I was thinking too, and maybe not be feasible, could you get more people, but maybe. When there's little items, there's only one of the items and then the rest of them are underneath and they only see the one item, so then they'll touch it and then you can give them the item that they want.
We can think about how that. Like when they do a target, so we target everything, every surface is clean and they only have one or two of items out.
Oh.
So that you're not, not a lot of people are touching the same item and then so that we constantly will stop them quickly. I know Lisa wants that on the table, maybe that's just not. Maybe just someone, we don't have as many.
Maybe we don't have as many little things and they can stay in them, in, you know, underneath. There's got to be one.
Maybe we get the plastic business and we wipe them down when they're done or something.
But compared to the picking up and buying and taking, they're not, not like the books where they're picking up, putting back.
We'll make sure. Um, school safety.
We didn't meet, but I just will give you an update that we have a woman from, I can't remember the company, it was safety here, or they even don't show up to this company, but we're not. Thank you. So they did the outdoor window signage at Region Seven and they did a beautiful job. So they came up today, let's do it, Richard. Have a plan for, she's going to come back and give us a quote because it is the last thing, or about the last thing I would say in security to do and that we really want to do. So the outdoor windows will be reworked and first responders will have to be able to identify exactly where they were coming from.
But they, they have doors on, doors on, they want every window to hide. I need the room number, right, so you know what room number.
That's going to be a lot of.
Yep.
It's going to look like a crossword puzzle.
Well, you know, but if you go to Region Seven, you get used to it, you know, they've got all the same numbering and it doesn't fit the. Quite like.
They don't have that big bank of windows like that, because I can't imagine that.
Well, it's a big bank of windows. In one home, it's like one number, it's not every single window.
Okay.
So there'll be one number probably for classroom window bank.
Yeah, okay.
So then it'll be like three or four going across the town, so hopefully it will be obnoxious, but it is one of the things that they probably recommend.
Okay. All right, great. What is, maybe any of this, more of my answer, but to share?
I tried logging into the meeting last month, but it, it was canceled. I don't know if they postponed it or not. I didn't see any further information and it'd be.
Hurried along.
If it hurried along, I can go to one tonight, because, you know.
Seven thirty, we're totally on track. And how about the event meeting? Visory meeting.
Unfortunately, we have not done anything.
All right, great, so let's see. There is one more thing I wanted to just mention. As you all know, we are zooming our meetings each month. I like to meet in person and I feel like this is a good, I, I think that this works. We seem like we've got. Everything kind of ironed out now, we even have ways for our people to participate. I would love to continue to meet in person and I also feel like it gives a. Vote of confidence for our school and, you know, the fact that we believe in the cleaning and we're, you know, put our money where it's always. That said, we do have this option, so if there is a time when you can't come to the meeting, you can't physically in the room, and you want to be connected by Zoom, just. That's fine, just let, let me know or let somebody know and we'll make sure that, you know, we get connected. I did put the Zoom link for this month and that month. I know I haven't done them before, you know, just. I'll just plan them out longer so that they're on the calendar and you can connect that way or get your individual email or. You could have things snuggier. Yeah, we should have a business store and we'll still make it with.
Sorry. What is that, cancel the meeting?
Maybe those, they're, like, maybe snow days you won't do for a school, but we're having our meeting. I don't really mind sitting at my house.
Well, we're distanced here.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, like I said, I like this. I do feel like we're safe. We've got a big space. We're so lucky to have this wonderful spot.
Right.
And we've got our sound worked out and the videos all working, so. We're good, but I just want to put that out there and, you know, let, give people that option. So if you ever feel. That you prefer to be zooming or there's some other reason, whatever, whatever reason there is, you don't have to say the reason is, you are, that's an option.
Sure.
Are we going to allow? The public's access to these meetings or are we going to keep that just constant?
Well, let me, we did get guidance from the state this day. We, we, if we meet in person, we need to allow public attendance, but only up to the capacity, which right now is ten. So if we had someone who wanted to come in, we had one who agreed, well, if the two people could come in, the others who would have to say. Could not come in, so we could allow public to come, but it would be depending on what the maximum number, the limit of. You know, people in an event, right, for the time you want to shut up, it's ten people.
That's right. Yeah.
So we probably, it's.
So for all intents and purposes, it's probably best for people, if they'd like to participate, which we would love, that they, that they participate, let's say. I would encourage. I really would love for people to use the Zoom link because now that they work so hard on it.
What's the woman's name who does the social media stuff?
Uh, Kim.
Kim, and she, like, the weeks before, there's a couple of times that I'm like, put on the PTO Instagram, like, hey, we're heading to. Like, I think people forget and it would be nice if we just gave people reminders.
Absolutely, show up. Yeah, I mean, we can even make, maybe it's something I can even offer her. I could make a post. That we send every month or, you know, put it like, hey, it's a nice meeting, here's tomorrow's meeting and then she can, you know, just change the link or, you know, she can type in the link or something like that. I've also been thinking, and I have this probably the right place to say it, but I don't want to forget because I keep forgetting, I want to. Advertise the hotel social media on the newsletter. I, I don't think people know about it. It has very few, it has very few followers. And people should follow it because it's good and it's fun and I just think they don't know it exists. And I think there's confusion because we've had the PTO one for a while. I want people to follow both. I mean, that would be ideal for the follow both, because they'll have different things that they. That they promote.
I'm promoting the hotel school settling pages on the PTO pages to sort of more people to follow.
Yeah, but I would like to start including it, like, if you are willing, if you could put a word in the newsletter specifically about following it and then maybe. We could include it like as like a regular thing.
Sure. Yep, yeah, if you send me the link for Instagram and Facebook, I'll, I'll put a little blurb.
And Twitter too. Yeah, I think I even added them to the bottom of our website. I'll little check that I got the links right, but I think they're all added on the page. But, you know, it's just a tiny little, like, postscript that, you know, is on everyone's page, but I thought a little blurb that specifically talks about them and then maybe we get it added to like the sign-on. The letter or something of the newsletter so that people get reminded.
Oh, like at the bottom, like the footer? Sure.
Yeah, they're here on the main content information on the website. Which, side note, the, I didn't even know, I didn't know it was going on for Veterans Day. I seen on the website, it says that there's virtual celebration. Is it okay if I post too many?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
You know, check out tomorrow, is it going to be Zoom link?
What's it, no.
It's going to be a video video.
Yep. Are you going to put that in place? Do you want me to put that in place?
Mary is actually going to put it in place and she is very crushed.
Yep.
Okay. She's creating, you know, putting together the whole video and she's also going to create a YouTube link. Because I think there's a lot of content on that and I'm wondering if the website will support it, so we may have to have a link to that, so she's going to play around with that.
They have, they have a link to YouTube, right? That will, that will work a lot better.
Yeah.
It's one of the reasons why I want to have a YouTube channel, so they can just always embed the videos, you know, like saying with the.
Yeah.
Where PTO page will have, is where I have Google Drive, we have a YouTube channel. So Mrs. Crush should have a YouTube channel for the hotel school site anyway, so she can probably post it. Elise's phone.
Okay. All right, well. Oh, we have a new, we have to vote to replace the oil tank at school. Let's do that, because I forgot my agenda. So, do you want to tell us what?
Well, we were required to replace the oil tank and we have a plan to do that, but. There's a piece of paper that needs to be signed off by the board and the first election, so we need an official vote for the first election and he has to sign off on that. In order to make it meet with the government specs. Ready for a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we do the oil tank.
Okay.
After much discussion for a very, very long period of time, I am delighted to make this motion.
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor? I. Opposed? Okay, the motion to replace the, the oil tank.
It got me replacing my oil tank. We've talked about it so long.
Oh, yeah.
I replaced my oil tank. I did not want to listen to all this nonsense.
I'll go through this again.
It was you and I, but I didn't did it. Right.
All right, well, that covers our agenda. If anyone would like to be.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Great, all those in favor?
I
Thank you. Have a nice day.